Morning, everyone. This time I'll call the November 29th meeting of the Harnett County Board of Commissioners to order and ask Commissioner Matthews to lead us in the pledge and the invocation.
My pledge is that the United States of America, in the road which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a great... Father, we do thank you for this opportunity we have to meet together this morning to address the issues that face our county. We just pray for our county, our state, our nation. We pray for our citizens, that you would be with them and we'd be able to work through and provide the services that would make this a wonderful county, in which thank you for all those who work and serve to help meet the needs of our citizens. We pray you'd be with us this morning in this meeting, so it would help our decisions to be those that would be best for our county and pleasing to you. All these things, we pray, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Matthews. All right, at this time, are there any additions or deletions to the published agenda?
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Yes, we have one change. We need to move Item 9 to December 13th meeting due to some additional requirements in the bidding process. When we bring that to you on the 13th, we'll also ask that potentially take action based on that due to the timeline that's required for execution of that grant.
I do hear a motion to adopt the amended agenda.
Chairman, I'll make the motion, we adopt the agenda as amended.
Motion in second, all in favor, please say aye. Hear it unanimously, Madam Clark. All right, Mr. Blavens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. If I may, before we get started, I'd like to introduce our new transportation manager, Mr. Chance Turein. He'll be handling Number 3 if it's okay with you all to talk about the agency safety plan. So the first thing up is the request for the public hearing on Monday. If you've had an opportunity to look at the application, I'll give you the total application request, which is $810,000 with a total local share of $109,000. Admin total is 439,410, with a local share of 65,912. The capital is 368,795, with a total local share of 40,978. As you're aware, the admin portion covers the Hartz admin staff, IT support, advertisement, and other administrative costs associated with running the transportation system. The capital has one fiscal year 24 vehicle replacement, and then the addition of fiscal year 22 replacement vehicles that we weren't allowed to get this year because of supply chain issues. There's an addition in there, and it's the first time ever, and what we're asking for, we have partnered, are still partnering with Department of Social Services to introduce a project that will be associated with fiscal year 24. This offered by DOT, and it's called Traveler's Aid. And then the gist of the Traveler's Aid is when people get stranded in Harnett County, they have no money, or they're poor, or they've come to a crisis, spouse on spouse, those kind of things, and they need a ticket, a one-way ticket out of Harnett County. We provide that piece. DSS would run the program, the money would funnel through our department. It's $5,000 total project, but it is a 50-50 match, but we've added it in there, and we're hoping that you guys would approve that, to see if this program will actually work. I looked and talked to several counties that actually do this, and it's been very successful, and it actually came as a surprise how many people, they really helped. So generally, when you help with transportation, it would be a bus ticket, maybe an airline or airplane ticket, but again, it's a one-way trip, you know, don't come back kind of thing. But we'd only provide it once. Is there any questions on that piece before we talk about the public hearing, any?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
When did this come about? I mean, I don't recall us having this.
The Traveler's Aid?
Yes.
I think it's been there a couple of years. It's just been overlooked, and DOT's pushing it because nobody was using it.
Okay.
So we'd like to take a crack at it. The other thing, I will mention that this year's been so disjointed on our application process with DOT, and the reason is, they were trying a new process. I came to the board talking in June about it, and then we had to submit admin in October. We had an October deadline for that, and we couldn't hold a public hearing until the capital became available because they were looking for a state contract for vehicles. State contract will actually be finalized December 9th. So the estimated costs for the vehicles are an estimated cost, so honestly. They bumped their estimates up eight to 10 percent, depending on the vehicle, and then those are the numbers we use, we have to use our numbers. We're hoping those numbers come down, but we won't know that until probably March, way before the fiscal year budget preparation, so.
Any other questions?
I have none.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm still concerned about this Traveler's Aid. I know there's been a shortage of drivers.
Yes, ma'am.
So how do you expect to have drivers for this? I mean, if we already have a shortage of...
Well, we just approved, our administration just approved a bump in their part-time salary up, within our current budget. You know, we have 15 part-time positions, we only have six filled. We have 12 full-time positions, and those are all filled. So you asked the right question, ma'am, because I'll tell you, we are struggling to find people to drive. We have reached out, Chance has actually reached out in the neighborhoods, just talked to people about it every opportunity he gets, we've all done that. We put signs in our windows, we're hiring, those kind of things. We're just struggling to find people to do it. And some of our problems are, and it's something we have to really look at, is that we have sort of two schedules. So Chance recognized on our, we haven't talked to HR yet, to be fair to them, but we've rediscovered on our advertising, we're saying work starts at 3:30 a.m., it runs to 7:00. We're like, we just missed it, we're like, wow, we actually have several shifts, and we should break it out by shifts, and maybe we can get a better traction. We have, I've interviewed 20 people, 20 to 25 people that applied, and we just can't fit them in the shifts, because we have certain times people are riding. You have dialysis, then you have, you know, 8 o'clock shift when people are going to work, and JCI, and those kind of places, and then you've got an afternoon where you have to pick people up. So we do divide that up amongst the part-time, and don't forget, we run on Saturdays, and we try to use all of our part-time for that. So we just filled the Saturday routes up with a higher, she's not in process yet, but soon as she finishes training, she'll be doing it.
So you have, you do have a person freed up to do this, this traveling aid project?
The Traveler's Aid?
Yeah.
Traveler's Aid's treated separately, we don't use drivers for that.
You don't need drivers for this?
No, all we're gonna do is buy a plane ticket or a bus ticket.
Oh!
Yeah, I'm sorry. I don't, you all know, I don't communicate well.
You didn't explain that, I tell you.
Yeah, we just buy, we just buy the ticket.
Okay, well, I totally understand it now, I don't want to advertise it back, excuse me. I'm in a service that we don't have the, the drivers.
Well, yeah, we couldn't put somebody in one of our vans and drive them up to Minnesota or something. But DSS will handle that, because it will be based on crisis need and some, you know, low income, so they'll handle the approval, and we'll just provide the monies, reimbursement, essentially.
Any additional questions?
Okay, so far as the public hearing, you know, the public hearing will be held to talk about the community transportation program itself, not just the 5310 or 11 that we're applying for, but also the rope we receive and all that. As most public hearings, we're just, we were hoping for public comments to help guide us as we plan for the next CTV.
Okay, we will have the public hearing on the agenda for Monday.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Just the next agenda item, which is the...
Okay.
So we have the grant agreement with the City of Fayetteville for that's the 5307 American Rescue Plan dollars, $71,000 with zero match. It's operating assistance for us to be reimbursed for people we take to the Fayetteville area, that's in the urbanized area, which is, some of it reaches up into Harnett County, some of it in Hoke, but generally, it's under the assumption that it's even percentage of our riders will be headed that way, that we can get reimbursed. Our current cost per trip is $41, so if we're taking somebody down to Fayetteville, that we're gonna try to bank, you know, use $41 as what we're gonna charge them. And we're trying to keep up with the numbers, I'll be honest, we don't have a lot of riders, except that now, what it does, it frees us up, if, once the agreement's in place, it frees us up to use this money instead of other pots of money, just to take people down there. So we'll expend it as quick as we can and see where it goes.
Any questions for Blavens about this matter? The consensus of the board is, we'll add it to the consent agenda for Monday. All right, Item 5.
Mr. Turein, if you would handle this, I'll be here for questions.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm the Transportation Manager, Chance Turein, presenting the Hartz Agency Safety Plan. Agent's safety plan is required to receive 5307, however replaces the system safety plan adopted 10 years ago. It's based upon the FTA Safety Management System, and good to have reduced system liability through activity safety measures. In this safety plan, you will see the four SMS components, the safety policy, safety assurance, safety risk management, and safety promotion, which includes training, communication, and other actions to create a positive and safe environment. This is an annual grant requirement that provides budget for administration of Hartz and capital budget, vehicles and requests to replacing current camera systems, and Hartz transit vans. Is there any questions, or...
Any questions from anyone about this proposal? Okay, hearing none, we will add this to the consent agenda for Monday, we'll prove one.
All right.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, everybody. I hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. I'm here to talk to you about a couple of things. We'll start with the most straightforward one at the beginning here, the review officers. It's really a title that they came up with a few years ago for MAP, reviewing plaits that come into the register of deeds. So a few decades ago, North Carolina general statute was implemented 4730.2, that every county was supposed to appoint a review officer within each county to review all plaits that come in. So I put an example of a plat on this screen, just so you can kind of reference what you're looking at there, but each review officer is supposed to go to training every two years, and they're also, every time a plat comes to the doors, before it goes to the deeds to be recorded, it has to be reviewed for 14 specific items on each plat, and if one of those items aren't there, they actually can reject it, and they have to go back and get that item fixed. So just for clarity on what the process is and why it's there, it's just to help keep the plaits that are being recorded officially correct. And we're asking to remove three previous employees of the GIS department. Most of them have retired, have transitioned over to other departments, and then we're gonna add in four current employees of the GIS department to be review officers within GIS. And I brought Clint Williams, GIS manager, if you have any specific questions on the process or what's going on there, but it's pretty straightforward.
Any questions about this matter? We'll add that to consent agenda for Monday.
Oh, there's some more on that one.
Oh, okay.
I'm sorry. My next part's on there.
No, you have to...
Yeah, no, you're good. No, you're fine. I didn't give you a heads-up beforehand, so. So the next thing I want to talk to you about is the technology use policy, and why we're making a change to the technology use policy. So MFA is the reason why we're making the change to the technology use policy. So first of all, what is MFA, before we can dig into the changes on the technology policy? I want you to understand and have a basic knowledge of what's going on here and why we're making these changes. So MFA is multi-factor authentication. It's just another layer of security that we're gonna add to our cyber technology here in Harnett County. So currently, we use what's considered a single-factor authentication, which is password authentication. So just to give you a simple example of that would be like locking your file cabinet. You know, you're putting one layer of security on your file cabinet with that one lock. So that's currently what we have with our passwords. What MFA would do is give us a second form of security, so it's like adding a padlock to that same file cabinet. So now you have two different keys and two different devices that you have to use to get into that file cabinet to access the data. So we're adding on another form of authentication to more secure the data that's in that file So with MFA, somebody is only granted access if you have both keys. So key one would be your normal password, which you currently use today. The second key would be a randomly generated code, which is a multi-factor authentication. Now, how you get that code is one thing we're discussing, and that's kind of why we're changing that policy, to update that, the factors around that. So, let's just go on. Wow, my brain is, it's Monday on a Tuesday, apparently. Email account compromises are the main cybersecurity issue that Harnett County IT has faced, and the users of Harnett County over the last two to three years. We've had compromised email boxes three unique times over the last two years. One of the times, which was the worst of the three, we actually were on a third-party spam filter list, being blacklisted for over three weeks, which unfortunately, the third- which unfortunately, the third party was being used by several state agencies and several surrounding counties. So we couldn't communicate with email to these counties. In each of these situations of the three, if we had had MFA, it would have severely limited, if not eliminated, each compromise. And the attackers would not have that access to the second form of authentication, or in this case, the padlock on the file cabinet. So that's why we're looking to MFA to help secure our network. And we're starting with email, which is probably the most difficult to secure because it's been the most problematic for our county over the last few years. So it, it complicates things when you add MFA to email because you, every time you get into your email box at different levels, you have to authenticate with that second form. So it's like pulling out two sets of keys every time you get into email instead of just the one password. So MFA can also prevent these other, um, ways of infiltrating our network by phishing, spear phishing, keyloggers, credentials, all those fun things. And, um, it just helps eliminate a lot of, a lot of facets to getting into our network. And just to kinda reiterate why MFA. So Harnett County, every single one of you guys that have a password have a door and a lock on the door to get into Harnett County. With that password, you get in there. But it's kinda like you have at your house, you've got your locked door, and then you put your key somewhere on the premise that somebody could find it if they looked hard enough. So everybody in the world knows that you have a door with a lock on it, and that password is the key to get in. And if they look hard enough, they're gonna find your password and figure it out. Multi-factor authentication adds that second lock in the key, even if you hide it on the premise, changes every day. So even if they get it the first day, for example, in this, this random example, they can't come back day two and get into that door anymore with the pad and open up the padlock because the key lock has changed and you have a totally different key, if that makes sense. So if we do not secure our network, um, with second factor authentication, it's just gonna continually get worse and people or the hackers, the, uh, just the, uh, bad players out there will continually try to get inside our door with your password. And so multi-factor authentication will give us another layer of prevention to keep them outside of that door. So what brings me here today is we're asking for a policy change. Um, so adding multi-factor authentication is gonna require our users to have a second form of authentication. So there's a couple of different options. And just to point this out, somehow the, um, the, um, the copy that I emailed Melissa had a question mark in it and a couple of words were missing. So this is actually the final wording of it, and the question mark was around, it's a multi-factor authentication may be required to utilize any county user account or technology. Users may use their personal, so I had a question mark there because we were still debating on whether we're gonna let them use their personal device, which we are. We decided to let them use their personal device to simplify things. Or a county issued device to set up an approved authenticator app or a personal county cellphone number to authenticate. Personal or county cellphone number to authenticate. So if a user doesn't wanna use one of those previous methods, we'll also give them a security token, which is another device. I brought in one for an example that they'll have to carry around. So this will be your second key if you don't wanna use it on your phone. So I kinda went through this already, but the three choices to do that second form of authentication will be an app on the phone, which is something that you'll download and install, and it'll automatically generate a six-digit code for you to be able to type in every time you ask for the second form of authentication. You can also get a text on your phone, which I'm sure if you've ever done online banking, you've got that second form of authentication through a text. So they'll, you log in username, password, and it takes you back that number. The first one just automatically generates the number every time on your actual app on the device. And the third one is this little guy, it automatically generates that six-digit number all, every thirty seconds throughout the day. And it's just, you have to look it up on this device. So we're, we're offering these as an option. Uh, we prefer not to use them just because the user would have to keep up with them. And there's issues, you know, that being able to keep up with it, being able to get into your system if you don't have it. Most ninety-nine percent of the time, if you've got a cellphone and are willing to use the app or get a text, you're gonna have that cellphone with you and not lose it. So the second policy change is we're, because of these devices that we're gonna hand out as an option, it says we will be issue these. So if the user doesn't wanna use their cellphone for whatever reason, or they don't have a county cellphone to use, we'll give them these, but we, these are not cheap and not free. So we're just putting in there that if you lose it by your own fault, not because of wear and tear, if it stops working, you know, that's one thing. But if you just lose this, you'll have to pay forty dollars to get a new one. So that's the second part in this policy. And then the other thing that we're changing is, um, we just wanted to clarify that if you decide to download the app on your phone, Harnett County, the authenticator app, Harnett County does not have access to your phone, does not have any control of your phone. Facebook has a lot more control than this app will ever have on your phone. So just wanted to clarify that, that we, that the only thing this app will do was generate the code instead of having to carry around this device, the app will do that. So. That was a lot, and I just wanted to make sure we, uh, we're on the same page on multi-factor authentication. Um, unfortunately, you guys will, as we migrate this way, we're gonna have to train each one of you guys on how to use it. So it's gonna be something you'll get to know intimately, as all of our other users will. So anybody that has an email account with Harnett County will have to start using this at some point. And we're gonna really start the migration once this policy, policy is implemented. Any questions or thoughts?
Do we have to? Have to close?
Unfortunately, yes. I'm afraid we're gonna have to. Yeah, I mean, it's not, it, it's not just to secure the, you know, the premises or whatever like that. It, you know, there's so much data that's behind our doors now between the, the health information that we keep. And then once they get a hold of, you know, and all financial data, I mean, we have all kinds of banking information and stuff like that. Your personal data's here pretty heavily. I mean, most, most everything that anybody could use is available somewhere on our network to, to implement and, and unfortunately, take advantage of us. So we're asking that everybody, well, unfortunately, we're going to make everybody do it to be unkind. Um, but we just, we just need to make sure we get this as secure as possible. And it's like I showed you on that one scene is, you know, your door not only gets into your file cabinet, but your door gets into everybody else's file cabinets too, if somebody infiltrates that one door, so.
Yes, sir, Mr. Terrain.
Thank you. Um, in Topeka, we went to this about two years ago, and it made a world of difference in ensuring that our system was protected. It is an extra step for individuals to do in order to get into their system, but it really does make a difference in security. It is the best step that we can take to ensure that no one has access to our system that shouldn't have access.
Well, I think it's a good idea. I don't have a problem with it, but especially since he said that he, he's gonna have to train us how to use this.
Yeah. Yeah, we're, we're, we're gonna try some different routes, but the first time, um, actually, we're looking at next Tuesday, we're gonna start with registered deeds and GIS. And, uh, we're gonna do some live training classes, kinda see how that works, make sure that's the way we need to go. But we're gonna try and, uh, make sure our under, our users understand why. That's the biggest reason. If, if they don't understand why, they're just gonna be frustrated and why, you know, what are we doing with this device? It's just a waste of time, extra, extra hassle. But the why is just to keep our data secure, and there's a lot of information, and that's, you know, that's, that's available to people if they have access to it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Terrain.
Do you log in once a day or every time you log in?
So right now, the way we're looking at this is we're gonna make, uh, MFA, the second form, be, you have to look up that second authentication code every five days. I know that's a lot, and it, trust me, it, e- even my IT guys are like, do we really have to do it every five days? But if we don't make you do it every five days, that means that key that's hidden out in the yard that the hacker can get a hold of is available to them to use and against us for over, up to five days. If we extend that time farther, the key is, you know, is available for them to use for thirty days or ninety days or whatever we do right now.
If there's no objections, we'll put the approval of this, uh, policy update on the consent agenda for Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. All right, um, next item, uh, I believe you're, Major.
Good morning. On behalf of Sheriff, we're asking that you allow us to, uh, give two of our retiring deputies, um, Detective True Love and Sergeant Lackey, they're retiring at the end of the year. And asking we allow them to buy their weapon that they carried back for one dollar.
Are we sure we wanna let Brad True Love loose with a gun?
We, we get that a lot, a lot of thought, but we, we, we decided that, uh, it'd be in good hands.
You can tell him I said that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, any objections to allowing these officers to purchase their weapons for a dollar? We'll add that to the consent agenda. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Fouts, uh, item ten.
Good morning. Um, so before you, um, we have two more amendments to the grant project ordinance that you all approved last week. So again, this is just a way to kind of budget the ARPA funds to keep them all on one running document. Um, so last week, you approved the initial ordinance and also the first amendment to the ordinance, um, which was ten million dollars, um, electing the standard allowance of ten million dollars to, um, reimburse us for staff salaries, and then we can use those funds, um, as a general fund for other projects. So today, we have two more. The first is, um, authorizing the six million dollars, um, for the Viper radio project. Um, again, this is purchasing radios for the, um, all county emergency responders as well as fire departments, um, in the county. And then the second one is allocating five hundred sixty thousand dollars to the premium pay for full-time EMS, um, county EMS staff. So, yeah, again, this will just give the, give the finance officer the authority to allocate these funds.
Any questions, uh, about these amendments? We not, we don't have to have a public hearing or anything.
No.
Okay.
No.
We will. Unless there's an objection, we'll add this to consent agenda for Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Snow.
Good morning, Commissioners. Item before you, on item number eleven is the resolution to sell real property, which you've had these type things before. This one is somewhat unique and requires a little bit more explanation than usual. So best way I can start is with a history lesson. Back on February of nineteen forty-one, what was then the town of Dunn and Harnett County participated in a tax foreclosure on the owner of a properties on East Edgerton Street in Dunn, North Carolina. As a result of that, they, the town and the county were the high bidders at the public sale, and they bought several lots lining East Edgerton Street. I've given you a handout this morning of a GIS information sheet. If you'll pull that up. What's in blue there are two lots that are left still in the name of the town, of now the city of Dunn, obviously, and Harnett County. Uh, it's basically composed of point fourteen acres. As you can see, it's a vacant lot. And with the reval that occurred into, for two thousand twenty-two, the, the fair market tax value pursuant to the guidelines of the Tax Department is seven thousand eight hundred forty dollars. Back on, uh, November the thirtieth of two thousand twenty-one, Peter Gito, who is the manager of Duncan Deals LLC, made an offer to the city of Dunn and Harnett County to purchase this property for seventy-five hundred dollars plus pay all closing costs. On December the fourteenth of two thousand twenty-one, the Dunn City Council adopted a resolution to accept that offer, contingent on Harnett County's approval, since they're a part owner, and also contingent on following all the guidelines of NC General Statute one sixty-eight dash two seventy-nine, which is the public auction, not the public auction, but the publication of, uh, upset bids on property sales, basically. After that, on February the seventh of this year, this, this board adopted a resolution to join with the city of Dunn in accepting the Duncan Deals offer, again, on the condition that the closing costs include all newspaper publication fees, the payment of the five percent deposit, and again, compliance with the Northern General Statute concerning one sixty-eight dash two seventy-nine. From that point, the upset bid war began. Usually, when we had these, you might publish it, you might have an upset bid if you're lucky, but it ha- happens very seldom. In this situation, believe it or not, it happened nineteen times. There were nineteen upset bids. I would dare say this is probably a, a record in the state of North Carolina under the statute. I'd be surprised if anybody beat this. But we had nineteen upset bids, and the reason, if you look at your sheet, the GIS sheet, facing the properties from East Edgerton Street on the left-hand side on eight oh one and eight oh three, those lots were, are owned by Robert Lee Crowell, Jr. As you can see, he's got a real tight boundary on his eight oh three home. So he wanted this lot to kinda give him some space so he could develop his home place and his next-door property. If you look at the property on the right-hand side, which is labeled eight oh nine, that was owned by Duncan Deals LLC. And Mr. Gito needed, obviously, this lot to be able to go forward with his, uh, development plans for that lot in that he's a, a develop, development investor out of county who has done several projects in the Dunn area. So in that you had two buyers that were very interested in this property, we had a bidding war. And that bids, one would bid, the other one upset, we'd re-advertise, same thing over and over again pursuant to the statute. So as you can imagine, the publication bill got very heavy, but these guys kept, kept going at it. The last upset bid occurred, um, just a couple of weeks, well, last month, basically. That upset bid was thirty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars. And then added to that was the publication fees, all these fees going through the Dunn Daily Record, four thousand three hundred fifty-three dollars and forty, forty-one cents, publication fees. Thank goodness we don't have to pay that. So when you add those two together, the total bid that's been offered with the last upset bid is forty-three thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars and forty-one cents. So when you look at the base, uh, bid of thirty-eight nine, that's five times what the tax value is on this property, if you can imagine that. If we could get a return on all those properties in the future, we'd, we'd have it made. This last upset bid was made by Robert Lee Crowell, Jr. Uh, it was not upset. We talked to Peter Gito prior to the time running out, and he just said, look, he was gonna let it go. And he congratulated Mr. Crowell for sticking with it as long as he did, and he said he could have it. And so at this point, we're coming back to the board with the resolution that's been passed out to you, uh, which is a joint resolution with the city of Dunn, whereby this board would basically accept the, the upset bid price of forty-three thousand two fifty-three point forty-one by Robert Lee Crowell, Jr. Uh, it again says as, as soon as Dunn passes this resolution together with us, then the, the county attorney and the city attorney are directed to issue a special warranty deed to Mr. Crowell upon his payment of the balance of his purchase price. And we anticipate, uh, if we, if you consider this resolution at your meeting next week, of course, you'll be done on December the fifth. The Dunn City Council, I've already talked to the, the Taliban Pope, who's the Dunn City Attorney, and they will place it on their December meeting. And so we should get this closed out easily in December. So I propose that this be placed on your consent agenda, Mr. Chairman, for consideration and approval by the board.
Any objections to placing the approval of this, uh, on the consent agenda?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, sir. All right, uh, Adam Clark, you wanna discuss the, uh, meeting schedule for two thousand twenty-three?
Absolutely. Um, each year, you have to set your, um, list of regular meetings. And normally, you meet on the first and third Monday of each month, with the first meet, first Monday meeting being at nine and the third being at six. So I've gone through and updated our schedule according to that. our schedule according to that for 2023. And if you guys will just review it, and if you have any changes, let me know. If not, we'll put it on the agenda for adoption.
Has everyone had a chance to review this schedule, the proposed schedule? Is there need for any changes? Hearing no, hearing no objections, we will add that to the consent agenda.
Okay, thank you, guys.
All right, next is applications to serve on boards and committees. You were given a handout before this meeting started about the District 8 Tourism Development Authority. We have completed the first two paragraphs. The only thing left is Mr. Smirnoff requested reappointment. Mr. Smirnoff lives in District 4, and I do not, I do not recommend reappointment for Mr. Smirnoff. Do I hear any, any comments? Okay, hearing no, hearing no objections, we will notify Mr. Smirnoff that he's not being reappointed, and we'll put it on the consent agenda for approval on Monday. All right, we have some other appointments. Do we have an opening on the Public Library Board of Trustees?
Ah, yes, Ms. Fado, her term is expiring December 31st of 2022, and she's eligible for reappointment if you guys would like to reappoint her. She's in District 5. If not, then there would be a vacancy.
Let's see, Commissioner Nickle.
Can we reappoint him? No objection.
Any objections to Commissioner Nickle's, Commissioner Nickle's recommendation to reappoint? Okay. The Jetport Committee. We're still waiting for, we still have not gotten an application from Mr. Massey.
No, sir.
Well, Lieutenant Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I will check on that about the application, because I need to know if he's willing to continue to serve. Can he, can he serve?
I've, I've talked to him. I know he's willing to serve. And with everything going on at the airport right now, I highly recommend that we do not set this advisory board, that we just need his application.
Okay, well, you have my because he's in my district.
Okay. Can you, if he, if he can get that application to us by Monday, we can add him and, and to the consent agenda with the, the rest of them. Does anyone have any objections to anybody being reappointed on this board?
My only question was, didn't we just appoint Roger Farina?
We did. He was filling an unexpired term.
Yeah. Right.
Okay.
That's the only question. Okay, if there's no objections, we will put this on the consent agenda for Monday. All right, the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, we have a list of people here. Are there any objections to reappointing any of these people? Now, Rose Tiente, her appointment doesn't expire until next year, so we don't really need to reappoint her at this time, do we?
No, sir.
Okay, so let's, let's take her off until next year.
Okay.
Anything, any other changes to this list?
I recommend that we appoint those on this list to the committee.
All right. Any disagreement with Commissioner McCoy's recommendation to reappoint these individuals? Hearing none, we will add this to the consent agenda for Monday. Mid-Carolina Aging Advisory Council. We have two vacancies on this board, one for a Diane Mangum from District 2, and one for a Jacqueline Bancroft from District 1. Do you, what's your feelings?
I think I've already appointed Diane Mangum.
Okay.
I don't know this lady. Jacqueline Bancroft. Don't know her. Do we have to do it Monday?
No, ma'am, we don't. You want to hold this one?
I would prefer to hold this. I don't like appointing people I don't know nothing about.
Okay. How about you, Commissioner Johnson? Ms. Mangum is District 2.
I don't know her personally, but have talked to her, and I would recommend her.
Okay. Okay, so we'll, we'll put the reappointment of Ms. Mangum on the consent agenda, and we will hold off on the reappointment of Ms. Bancroft.
Okay.
That takes care of applications, boards and committees. County Manager's Report, Mr. Trout.
Thank you, Chairman. A couple of items, you know, to look at the schedule for meetings, and just as a comment, we have set out a special meeting date for February 6th for the legislative luncheon. Just so you know, I do plan that the January 10th work session, we would conduct legislative priorities discussion at that time in order to prepare our documents that we will present to our legislators at the luncheon. So we'll have the time. It's not listed as a specific meeting, but it will be an item that we conduct at the January 10th meeting. The other item I had is just to get some feedback, direction from the board as it relates to the CIP approval. We have had the presentation, the hearing on the CIP, and wanted to know if the board would like to see that item placed on the December 5th agenda as a consent item or a separate item. We have not had any questions or concerns from the board, and we only had the one, one item that was mentioned and supported in the hearing. So just want to get some direction on how you'd like to handle that item, because it is set to be approved at the December 5th meeting.
What's the feeling of the board? Put it as a separate item, or you want it on the consent agenda?
I'm good with consent, but somebody wants to put it separate. Okay, we'll add this one.
I think it ought to be, I think it ought to be a separate item.
I agree. I think we can put it as a separate item. A little more discussion.
Add it, yeah, add it as a separate item, please.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's all I have.
Good, okay. All right, we have a closed session. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board go into closed session for the following purpose, to consult with the county's legal counsel in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege concerning the handling of certain litigation, including the following case: workers' compensation claim for Jennifer, Jennifer Rabah IC File Number 22-030689. This motion is made pursuant to NC General Statute Section 143-318.11A3.
Second.
We have a motion and second, and a discussion. All in favor of closed session, please say aye. Any opposition? We are now in closed session. aye. Any opposition? We are now in closed session.